Ask that everyone turn their camera on for a roll call, please. If they are available, have the technology available.
Absolutely. As requested, if you can turn your camera on for the roll call, that would be great.
Thank you.
Only Mr. Tubbs is there, but he's not going to be doing the roll call, so. Um, I guess. Portion presenter. Hi, Sean, how you doing? Oskar and Natalie, will you be, uh? During the roll call, probably not there. Great. Well, uh, with that, we'll call the meeting to order.
Nope, I'm just listening.
Okay, great. We'll call the this special meeting on, uh, July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four to order. Demmerich, would you please do the roll call?
Supervisor Galloway. Supervisor Pruitt. Supervisor O'Brien. Mister Smith. Mister Goolsby. Mister Higgins. Supervisor Barlow. Supervisor Woodward.
He's muted.
Supervisor Woodward.
Yes, I'm here. I'm sorry. I don't know how it muted back.
No worries. Supervisor Reed is absent. Supervisor Rutherford. Commissioner Duranzio. Counselor Payne. We do have a quorum. Thank you.
Excellent. With that, would we please have the notice of an electronic meeting?
Yes. This meeting of the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission is being held pursuant to Code of Virginia subsection C of section two point two dash three seven zero eight point three, which allows a public body to hold all virtual public meetings. This meeting is being held via electronic video and audio means through Zoom online meetings and is accessible to the public. Notice has been provided to the public through notice at the TJP PDC offices to the media, website postings, and agenda. The meeting is held pursuant to the remote electronic participation in all virtual meeting policy as adopted by the commission on September first, twenty twenty two. The meeting minutes will reflect that the meeting was held by electronic communication means and the type of electronic communication means by which the meeting was held. A recording of the meeting will be posted at tjpdc.org within ten days of the meeting.
Excellent. Very well. Well, thank you, everybody, for being here. This should be a pretty brief meeting and, um, hope you're all having a nice summer. It's good to see your faces. And we'll be, uh, meeting regularly next, uh, uh, in August here. Um, okay, so, uh, I believe we've got Mister End, uh, on the TJPC staff presenting on the Housing Preservation Grant.
Yep, that's me. Uh, yes, how y'all can't see me? No matter what I do, my video doesn't work, so you'll just have to go without my face, I suppose. Um, let me share my screen. I'm gonna give a quick presentation on, um, our Housing Preservation Grant, um, application for the twenty twenty four, uh, federal fiscal year, uh, which opened up at the end of June and will, uh, the application period will close, uh, on Monday. So we're getting this in just in time. So for those of you who may not know, the Housing Preservation Grant, um, basically helps folks, um, rehabilitate their homes, um, particularly those with low or extremely low incomes. The way the program works, generally speaking, is, uh, we have partner organizations in each of our rural counties, including Albemarle, um, AHIP, which operates in the rural part of the, uh, of the county for this program. And they find applicants, uh, bring their applications to us. We approve them and, uh, reimburse them for their, uh, expenses. Per project, five thousand dollars is available. Typically, though, there's about thirty-five hundred, uh, for any given project on average. Um, and the local organizations, uh, know to match those funds with, uh, funds from elsewhere. Typically, the money is used for things like a new HVAC system or a roof replacement. Generally speaking, pretty crucial, um, repairs for people's homes. In the previous program year, which is still ongoing, actually, um, will technically close in September, but uh, the, the grant is active for two years, so we have a lot of time yet to spend down those funds, though already we have spent the majority of them, um, as you can see, of the one hundred and seventy-four thousand or so, we've already committed one hundred and forty-four thousand, so probably a handful of projects will come in, um, the rest of the summer to be completed, and that, that might wrap things up. Um, on the right is a, uh, graphic representation of, um, how much money has gone to East County, essentially. Each county being, um, folks who reside in those counties, uh, for this program year, twenty twenty-three. Um, as you can see, Louisiana and Flavanna and Albemarle make up the majority. Um, and our partner, the, uh, Flavanna Louisa Housing Foundation, uh, manages both Louisiana and Flavanna, so we, we do the majority of our work, um, with them, sixty percent. This is accounting for forty projects total. So far this program year, we expect, um, fewer, slightly fewer for next year, as I'll get to on the next slide, um, considering a dip in the amount of funding allocated to the state of Virginia by the USDA. Um, so that brings to the proposed budget, um. The previous year's budget was somewhere around two hundred and twelve thousand that we requested from Virginia of around four hundred and twenty-four thousand available for the whole state. Um, this year, we're asking for approximately one hundred and thirty-six thousand, um, based off of, uh, that being half of what's available. That's the maximum you can ask for. Um, of that, one hundred and eleven thousand or so will be passed through uh, to our partners and the ultimately to, uh, the recipients, um, homeowners in our region. Twenty thousand or so will be for the TJPDC to operate its administrative costs. Um, so mostly, you know, paying for, for example, me administering my time or, um, printing costs and things, and then we set aside four thousand for, uh, sub recipients. Um, so our, our contracting agencies, we can pass along two hundred or so per project to them, which helps them greatly. And for the timeline, today, we've had this, um, meeting, this is actually the end of the public comment period today. Um, to date, have not received any public comments. And the pre-application itself is due, uh, the twenty-ninth. Twenty twenty, uh, September first, twenty twenty-four is when the program year is set to begin. Um, the, the application is a little bit late coming out this year. Usually comes out about two months earlier, as far as I can tell. Um, so there may be a, a change with with that September first date, depending on how long it takes them to get back to us with awards. But, um, that is the spiel, so, um, yeah, I think that sums things up pretty well. I don't wanna hold up the proceeding any further, but if anyone has any questions about what I've talked about, um, now would be a good time.
Anybody have any questions for the presenter?
Um, could you help me understand a bit about the, the matching that your one slide mentions? Is that matching provided directly by the localities, uh, based on their, like, parata? Or is that matching coming from the, uh, TJPDC directly?
No, it's not coming from us. It's coming from, um, for example, let's take the Flavanna Louisa Housing Foundation. They would find funds from another source, maybe a state source, occasionally from home or something else, um, a federal source, um, and they would bring those, uh, funds to the table already for us, so that's not something that TJPDC deals with, but that's part of the application process is that whatever they're asking from us, they have to bring to us a matching amount from somewhere else.
And, and all of our concerned partners have already identified the respective matching funds?
Uh, I think in large part, yes. I think, uh, because the program years sort of overlap with the fiscal years, um, of a lot of our organizations and ourself. They have likely identified most of them. I think maybe there's, there's some, um, up in the air, but typically, um, are for the, the amount of money that goes into any one project, um, on average is, is twenty-five percent made up from HPG funds and seventy-five percent from elsewhere. So it's usually not even close, um, that there's, you know, this is usually sort of the icing on the cake for whatever else they've got going on.
Yes, many of these projects are funded by multiple grant sources and many of the sources are private. Um, but the nonprofits are able to pull in sources that are not state or federal, um, but private.
Please go ahead.
Um, I was just going to say that, uh, while this is, um, kind of like additional funding for those projects, they do, um, typically include this in their annual funding, uh, budgetary summaries, because this has been a regular source of funds over the past several years.
Um, and it's not a thing, really. They might be hard for us to identify a unique source of matching funds that isn't otherwise accounted for. Like, they would have to fundraise to do matching. They, they, they're not kind of putting that kind of premise by it.
No, I've never heard them say that they have had any difficulty finding the matching funds. They usually are using funds that they've already sourced.
And if you'd permit me one other quick question, I actually couldn't get very helpful um, information from the USDA, uh, RFP on this, uh, about what they're using to define what is and is not a rural area. Um, and, you know, as Albemarle continues to go through kind of demographic change and place change, I, I'm kind of curious how they're understanding it, because I see that they uh, places that are, um, you know, uh, incorporated towns and cities under twenty thousand, but I, I don't know how they're viewing, uh, you know, independent counties in the weird way that Virginia does it.
So there's a, there's an online map tool that's, uh, that we use to verify whether or not projects are within the, um, rural areas that USDA defines. I would be happy to share that with the commission.
I think I was trying to use it earlier and it wasn't working.
Yeah, uh, actually, I can sort of speak to that, generally speaking, for Albemarle County. Everything that isn't Hollymead, Forest Lakes, uh, uh, Croze proper, uh, and the very inner ring qualifies. Everything but that. That makes sense?
Yep. I mean, that's about what I expect, but I'm just curious. I guess how USDA is magically drawing their lines.
They do it with by, uh, census block, so on one side of the street, you can be there, on the other side of the street, you're not, um. It's, it's borderline black magic, but that's what it is.
Hey, any other questions? Seeing none, at this point, we'll open up the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this matter, please do so on topic and no more than five minutes. We have anybody wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll now close the public hearing. We have discussion among the commissioners. All right, seeing that we have no discussion, we will now take a vote on it, I assume. Is that correct? Or no, we're gonna wait? There's no vote to take, is that correct?
So there is an intergovernmental review memo in your packet, um, explaining um, the intergovernmental review process that is required by USDA, and that is acknowledged in the resolution that is also in your packet, and you will vote on the resolution.
Go ahead.
The intergovernmental review is a requirement by, um, USDA and by many federal agencies, um, for local and regional grant applications to make sure that, um, state and um, local officials have an opportunity to, um, have a say in how those dollars get used, um, prior to the dollars being awarded. For the state of Virginia, there is no single point of contact identified for intergovernmental reviews. Um, but we are required to notify affected local governments at, and we do that at the regional level through this body. So this is your notice that, uh, we are applying, intending to apply for this grant and, um, we are asking for your support as well.
Great. Um, okay, so we are, we do have a motion. Is, is there a motion to present on this, or we just?
Um, I can move to approve the resolution included.
You have a second?
I'll second that, sir.
All right, are we taking a roll call on this one? I imagine so. So, Miss Emmerich, if you take the roll call.
Supervisor Galloway. Supervisor Pruitt. Supervisor O'Brien. Mister Smith. Supervisor Goolsby is absent. Mister Higgins. Supervisor Barlow. Supervisor Woodward. Supervisor Reed is absent. Supervisor Rutherford. Commissioner Duranzio. Counselor Payne.
All right, um, anybody against? Nope, okay, so the motion passes. Um, all right, on to, uh, additional business here, remote electronic participation for all virtual meeting policy. Mr. Blunt.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Um, as you all convened this meeting this evening, um, under your remote electronic participation and virtual meeting policy, uh, it is also necessary that we put this item, uh, on the agenda for you this evening, because there are uh, some changes that need to be made, um, pursuant to some legislation that passed during this, uh, General Assembly session um, earlier this year. Uh, in your packet, you do have a version of the policy, uh, that shows the proposed changes highlighted in yellow. And then following that, there is a clean copy of the resolution, uh, they would include those changes. So you may recall you adopted this policy initially back in September of twenty twenty-two, so almost two years ago. Um, and again, uh, legislation is driving the changes, uh, that we're bringing before you, uh, uh, in this document. Uh, first one is to increase from twenty-five percent to fifty percent. The maximum number of all virtual meetings that you can hold per year. Um, so we have ten regularly scheduled meetings, uh, for the commission. Um, so that, uh, would allow you to have up to five virtual meetings, should you desire to do so. Of course, there's still the requirement that you cannot have two in a row, um, so you'd be looking at a, at an every other uh, meeting kind of thing, but that amount, uh, percentage amount was, uh, increased. Uh, the second change, uh, is, uh, really an expansion of existing provisions concerning the members' use of audio and vis- and video technology during the all-virtual meetings. Uh, I asked you at the beginning of the meeting to turn your cameras on. Um, that is basically what that change is talking about, uh, with regard to establishing a quorum, is to have um, your, your video on if it is available and working. And then the third change, uh, again, I mentioned that you had initially adopted this, uh, policy almost two years ago. Uh, there is now a requirement that you have an annual adoption of the policy. So those are the changes that were required by the legislation. Um, there's also a few other technical and streamlining changes that we included in the attached. Uh, we did share this with, uh, legal counsel, uh, and, uh, are recommending that you adopt the proposed changes this evening.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions?
Yeah, I would, just to clarify, David, is the video on just for the roll call or for the entirety of the meeting?
Well, it's interesting the way the language, uh, is worded, because it speaks to, um, for the purposes of establishing a quorum, so I'm just gonna read it to you. And, you know, of course, if, if you, if you don't have it in front of you, but, um, you know, when any member has audiovisual technology available and electronic communication is being used to establish a quorum, that member shall be considered absent from any portion of the meeting during which visual communication with the member is voluntarily disconnected or otherwise fails, or during which audio communication involuntarily fails. So I think the read on that, that I would have, and in talking with some others, is that you have it on for the establishment of the quorum. I would say that you need a quorum if you're gonna be taking a vote. So if folks have their, uh, video off during some discussion, but when it comes time to vote, you know, during, during the roll call vote that Ruth just did, for example, that camera would be on. I thi- I think the, the premise behind this and it being brought forth by some folks in the open government world is that, you know, this is a virtual meeting. We don't, you know, you know, we wanna make sure that we can see folks, uh, when you're having, you know, when you're having these public meetings. So I think that's the idea hi- behind it, uh, and the, and the spirit behind the change.
Thank you, David.
Hey, any other questions?
So this is, uh, maybe getting into the weeds, but my understanding of Roberts is, is that once you've established a quorum, if the quorum, if, if the number drops after the establishment, you can still proceed. This seems to confuse that issue a little bit, doesn't it?
I, I think the language is confusing, um, but again, I think if you were, you know, I would, I would agree, and I think TJPDC in the past has had some meetings where we did not, you know, have a, have a quorum physically assembled. We may have had six people. We proceeded with the meeting and the discussion, uh, but then we, we got someone that came in late, then we would, you know, officially meet, call the meeting to order, and I think that for purposes of, of taking a vote, uh, on any action item, you do have to have a quorum. But I agree, the language is, is clunky.
So when in doubt, you know, we're, we're gonna have to inflict our visages on everybody else. Got it?
For, I, I was always under the impression that you had to have a quorum for votes.
Correct. So this is saying that if your camera is not on, if you've involun- if you voluntarily turned it off, and we've got five people with their cameras on, then you're absent from the meeting unless your camera's on. So that's what I'm saying. You know, have the camera on when you're taking that vote particularly.
And, uh, and the reasoning to go to, uh, fifty percent, David, um, any particular thoughts there? Oh, David, we lost your audio there.
He's muted.
I, I, I had just said I didn't realize my camera was, uh, was off, so I turned my camera on and then turned my, my audio off. So see, you've got me all confused. Um, the patron of the legislation this year, primary patron, had, um, had brought similar legislation the year before and had tried to increase that percentage. Um, former member of city council, uh, and I felt just, you know, I think, uh, in Northern Virginia. Um, so I think felt that, uh, you know, they needed more flexibility for a number of reasons, uh, particularly related to some of the traffic issues that they have up there. Uh, was not successful in twenty twenty-three, uh, brought it back again this past year, a little different makeup of the General Assembly, uh, and was able to get that fifty percent through. So I, I, I don't know that they would, uh, be coming back to try to increase that anymore, but I think that was the rationale behind it this year.
And I assume that we could have bylaws that, that are more restrictive than that?
Um, in your bylaws, if you wanted to, um, uh, yeah, if you wanted to, you know, you know, have something that, uh, you know, stipulated that you would only have a certain number of all virtuales, you know, per, uh, per year, uh, you can state that. I think, you know, in the, you know, since this policy was enacted a couple of years ago, I think you've, you've not used it even to the extent you would have had the, uh, opportunity to under the, uh, still existing policy, where you could have had three, because the language is two or twenty-five percent, and you round up to the next whole number. Uh, but I think it's, it's been a tool that you've had for flexibility purposes, such as this, which I think we've had to have this special meeting in July, two or three years now because of the timing of some grants, so. So that's something that I have found in talking with others, that, uh, local governments are, are, are saying, hey, we're gonna schedule to have X number of virtual meetings throughout the year, and that they're gonna be in, you know, in August and November or whatever. I think it's there as an option, should you need it.
Comment, the, um, that maybe staff could note for the organization. Our calendar is set in the calendar year, correct, for the meetings, or is it set in the fiscal year?
I believe that, uh, the, that Christine includes a calendar of meetings for you in the December, uh, meeting packets, so I think that we look at it on a calendar year basis.
It seems like a best practice that I've been hearing from others and we've started to use in our own county or on some of the other bodies that are not the board or the commission, is to state it in advance so, um, what your intent would be for the virtual. So for example, like this special meeting, if the commission said, in the event of special meetings, those, you could call those out as likely virtual, um, or maybe a summer meeting that you're gonna establish at that calendar time, which one may be virtual, so you're announcing it ahead of time and well in advance of any public notice that that's the intent, but I just throw that out as extra info.
Thank you. Uh, we, we could certainly announce intent if that would, would be of desire. Um, the key is when you get to, as you know, the notice requirement itself, uh, and that if you advertise it as, as an in-person, uh, you can't change it to virtual, you know, on a whim, you would have to, you know, again, give the proper notice and um, you know, advertise it as virtual before holding as an all-virtual.
Are those that are attending in Zoom on a normal meeting, hmm, they are not counted as part of the quorum, correct?
So this requirement, uh, relates to if there is an all-virtual meeting, such as what you're having now. If you were to have a situation where Louisa County's Board of Supervisors was meeting and you have five, which is a quorum physically assembled there in your county office building, and you and Mister Woodward were participating, uh, remotely, this would not apply. It's only in situations where you have a all-virtual meeting.
What, what I'm talking about is when you have a normal TJPDC meeting in Charlottesville, then to have a quorum, you have to have, um, I forget what the number is.
Seven.
You would have to have seven people physically there. So what I'm saying is, eh, if, if I, for instance, wanted to participate via Zoom, then i- as long as you had a quorum, that would be okay, but if you didn't have a quorum, I wouldn't count I in the makeup of the quorum.
We're voting, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
So typically.
Provision only applies to all virtual meetings. That would not be an all-virtual meeting in the situation you're describing.
So the, the fifty percent change that you're talking about is not fifty percent of the normal meetings, it's fifty percent of virtual meetings?
Really fifty percent of your regular meetings, so we look at TJPDC as having ten regularly scheduled meetings per year.
Well, I mean, I, I think it's a great idea, save somebody driving eighty-four miles every once in a while, which, uh, you know, I'd be all for it, but I still am not completely sure about the, uh, the quorum aspect of it, because I think that if, for instance, you only had five people there and I came on, um, by Zoom, then you still wouldn't have a quorum. I mean, if you had, if you had the, the ones that are owned by Zoom don't count towards the quorum, I don't think.
Right. So what happens is the physical quorum is needed to vote you into the meeting.
Exactly.
Can't be voted in, then you can't vote. But once you are voted in, then yes, you are counted as the quorum for the rest of the meeting.
That's what I'm saying.
Meeting, that meeting is not considered an all-virtual meeting.
Right.
Meeting, because you're required, if you're gonna have folks joining by remote participation, then there has to be a quorum physically assembled in order, as Mister Galloway said, to vote you in, to allow you to participate remotely.
That's the way I understood it.
You got it.
Now, I'm just looking at the language there on um on notification, and I'm not saying it's inconsistent. Um, but it references twenty-five percent for the typical meeting. So the all virtual meeting is fifty percent. Is that is that? Is that correct or is that intended to be something different there?
Okay, let me.
I'm looking at page um. Well, it's it's really uh. I think it's page two.
Yeah, it's actually in two different places. You can have fifty percent um. Of your meetings. To be all virtual. That is your cap.
Okay, so I think it's line item four on page two then. Or is it, which which is strictly referencing um due to a personal matter?
That's that's something totally different.
Totally different.
Those are the reasons that um if you're gonna participate. Remotely as a member and there is a quorum physically assembled. Uh, at the TJ PDC and the commission votes to allow you to participate from a remote location. There is a reason that you have to state that uh why you're participating remotely. And those are what are laid out in A.
So in theory, then, with this change. You could participate in twenty-five percent of the meetings for personal means that you stated in advance. But you could also participate because of a medical illness or injury that's kept you away. Above the twenty-five percent, is that a correct assumption?
That that is correct. Yeah, yeah. In A, they only apply the twenty-five percent um. To the personal matters and the rest would would not be limited by that, correct?
Okay. Excellent. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, I guess we need to take a motion here. Would somebody like to make a motion?
No move.
We have a second? All right, roll call, please, Miss Everett.
Supervisor Galloway?
Yes.
Supervisor Pruitt?
Aye.
Supervisor O'Brien?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Supervisor Goolsbee is absent. Mr. Higgins?
Aye.
Supervisor Barlow?
Yes.
Supervisor Woodward?
Yes.
Supervisor Reed is absent. Supervisor Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Duranzio?
Aye.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Blunt, all right, and Mr. Blunt, uh, I think you wanted to speak about the Vattie Grant. I forgot to mention that at the beginning.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, appreciate the opportunity and 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 I believe next, uh, well, in September, which I believe is gonna be your next meeting. Um, yeah, we're gonna have a uh, you know, more formal um update on the Virginia Telecommunication Initiative Body Program that we have, but. Um, just just wanted to give you a brief update. Body twenty-two, which is the project we're working on and have been working on for the past couple of years. Moving right along, Firefly is, you know, just, you know, doing great work. Uh, just got a report from them that they've completed more than thirteen thousand passings. Uh, with their fiber construction and and that's on the way to uh the thirty-six thousand plus. Passings that are the the milestone for the Body Twenty-two uh project. So I think we're in good shape and. In reaching that mark uh in just about a little over a year from now. Uh, but the big news that I wanted to share with you all this evening, in case you had not uh seen our media release from earlier this afternoon or or seen it from. From somewhere else, that it was announced uh yesterday that TJ PDC was awarded twelve point two million dollars uh in Body twenty twenty-four funding. Uh, and that's to expand on the work that we're currently uh doing with Firefly. Um, total cost of this particular project uh is forty-eight million. Uh, and the additional work will uh expand uh the number of passings by about fifty-eight hundred. Uh, over the course of an uh of eighteen months. Um, and that's gonna be taking place. In ten of the original thirteen counties um that we're working with now and uh as part of Body Twenty-two. So so we're just really happy about that. Uh, you want to really congratulate Firefly. Uh, as you know, um, they've been a great partner. They have a great team there. Um, certainly wanted to to thank uh Lori and Gorian on our team uh for working with Firefly to put together a really good application. So just to give you a sense, um, uh, just very briefly, there was about forty-one million dollars available uh in this funding round. Uh, the requests that were submitted were asking for a hundred and seventy million. Uh, there were ten projects that received funding out of the twenty-five that applied. And if you look at our twelve point two million against the forty-one million total available. Uh, we got uh somewhere close to thirty percent of the money that was available. So. Um, you know, again, I think we're making really good progress at getting people connected to the internet and I'm just really excited about. Uh, continuing to work with Firefly and 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 Firefly, I will tell you too, just as a final note, they have already reached out today. To the state's broadband office to see if they can begin work under this new project uh as soon as possible. Uh, because they've already got, you know, their design crews, their make-ready crews, construction crews, and their subcontractors are already in place. Uh, you know, in a number of these counties, uh, you know, very near to uh to where the new project areas are, and they just. They just wanna keep rolling. So um uh we'll uh hopefully be able to provide you with more detail about that in terms of the. You know, the work on twenty twenty-four when we have that more formal update for you, but just wanted to make sure you all are aware and. Uh, we're we're very excited to continue to to move forward and work with Firefly.
Thank you, and agreed. Great news for everybody and uh. Uh, Firefly has been amazing. They really have. Wonderful partner for Savannah and I'm sure for all the other counties. And I'm pretty sure that we're now taking over Nelson County as far as the most subscribers in Savannah County. So we have the best.
So it's back in class.
Um, uh, uh, okay, I don't think we have any old business right now. Um, and the next meeting is September fifth. Uh, which will be my wedding anniversary, so um she won't be happy about that, but we'll survive.
I just wanted to confirm that everyone is okay with canceling the August meeting. It would be exactly a week from now.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. And Christine Jacobs did send her regrets to you all for not being here tonight. She's at SEI um with uh. UVA and on a bus and unable to even join remotely.
Excellent. All right, well, you all have a wonderful rest of the summer and we'll see you in September. And thank you very much for making time for uh this meeting tonight. Motion do it, John, please.
Right, so.
All right, I don't think we need a roll call for that one. All in favor, say aye. Anybody against? The motion passes. Thank you very much.
God bless everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.